Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Hidalgo.
Here.
Commissioner Keller has an excused absence this evening. Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Vice Chair Herrero.
Here.
And Chair Barrera.
Here.
We have a quorum of six commissioners present.
All right. Next up on the agenda is public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? No? All right. Seeing none, next is approval of action minutes of February 28th, 2019. Does the commission have any comments?
I did want to add something to the item on the Center for the Arts. I wanted my concern about the internal storage and the transparency and welcoming aspects from Hollis Street added in there.
Okay.
But other than that, I would move approval. I mean, with that correction, I would move approval.
Second? Moved by Commissioner Donaldson and seconded by Vice Chair Herrero. Is that without exception? All right. Thank you. We'll make that correction.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any -- oh, actually, no. Next is the Community Development Director's Report. Charlie, you've got some info for us?
Yes, I have a little bit here. First, with regard to recent city council actions, they've met twice since your last meeting. Their council meetings were on March 5th and March 19th. On March 5th, the council introduced an ordinance amending the provisions for cannabis in Title V of the municipal code to allow cannabis products to be visible from the exterior. Because this was not a change to the planning regulation portion of the municipal code, it did not require a planning commission recommendation, which is why you didn't hear it first. The council then passed that ordinance on second reading at their March 19th meeting. The council discussed an informational report that they had previously requested on the development bonus system and then directed staff to schedule a study session on ways to mandate project labor agreements for development projects, including the possibility of adding it to the development bonus system, among other possibilities. So that study session will be scheduled for a council meeting sometime in the future. The council also discussed an informational report that they had previously requested on our parking requirements, and then they directed staff to prepare an ordinance to eliminate all minimum parking requirements while maintaining the maximum allowances. And this ordinance will be scheduled for a public hearing at a future planning commission meeting because this is an amendment to the planning regulations. On March 19th, the council approved the 2018 annual progress report on the general plan, including the housing element, and authorized staff to submit it to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research and the State Department of Housing and Community Development, which occurred this week. The report is due April 1st, so we got it in on time. The council considered a request for a noise waiver at the Emory Tech Building on 65th Street for a Saturday crane lift to replace 18 air conditioning units on the roof. However, the council continued the item because the applicant advised that the requested date for the noise waiver had changed. The council consideration of this request is now scheduled for April 16th. As I previously reported to you, the commission's January 24th approval of the Marketplace Parcel B project has been appealed by Wareham Development. On March 19th, the council reviewed the appeal and determined that certain issues that were raised in the appeal letter had not been adequately addressed by the commission when you approved the project. Therefore, the council has remanded the matter back to the commission for reconsideration, which we have scheduled for your next meeting on April 25th. Whatever the commission decides on April 25th will again be the final decision unless it again gets appealed to the council. So you'll be seeing that project back again next month.
Charlie, a question. Is there further clarification of or description of the elements not considered?
It primarily had to do with -- well, there were five points raised in the appeal letter, and the main issue was the wind analysis.
Okay.
But there are some other issues as well.
Okay. Great.
I will say that the council, in remanding it back to the commission, directed the commission to only consider the five items in the appeal letter. So you don't have to have a whole new presentation of the entire project. You're just focusing on the appeal letter. In other news, there will be a scoping meeting on the EIR for the Ani Christie Mixed-Use Project. I'm sure you know what that is. Next Thursday, April 4th, at 6:30 PM here in the council chambers. This meeting will be hosted by staff and our EIR consultants, Urban Planning Partners. The purpose is to allow the public to weigh in on what should be covered in the EIR. I would note that this is not a planning commission meeting, and you are not required to attend. If you do decide to attend, we would respectfully request that you only listen and not participate in the meeting to avoid any Brown Act issues. Caltrans will be hosting a community meeting about their so-called MacArthur Maze Vertical Clearance Project on Wednesday, April 10th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, with a presentation at 6:00 PM at ECCL. This project, which is going to rebuild some of the bridges in the maze, has the potential to detour significant amounts of traffic onto Emeryville streets. There should be a flyer in front of you that has more detail about the project and about that meeting, and if you're concerned about these issues, I would encourage you to attend that meeting. Again, it's in two weeks from yesterday, on Wednesday, April 10th, 5:30 to 7:30 at You should by now have received from APA your badges and informational packets for the National Conference at the Moscone Center in San Francisco, April 13th through 16th. It looks like this. I hope you all got this. Let me know if you didn't, so we can follow up with APA. I look forward to seeing you there. Finally, on a sort of a sad note, as you -- I'm sure you all know by now, our housing coordinator extraordinaire Catherine Furpo is retiring, and this is her last week. The city council will be honoring her with a proclamation at their next meeting next Tuesday. We will miss her greatly, and we wish her the best of luck. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Thank you, Charlie. We'll move on to disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. Does anybody have anything? All right. All right. Let's start the public hearings. The very first one is the Adeline Spring Extension Request. It's a request for a one-year extension for a conditional use permit and design review for the U.S. Spring Building.
Good evening, Chair Barrera and the planning commissioners. This is a permit extension. If you may recall, the commission approved a use permit and a design review last year in March. That included, it's basically, it's a housing project with 29 units and four to six live-work units. This is located on Adeline, at the corner of Adeline and West MacArthur Boulevard, and the proposal is to remove -- demolish the existing ones to rebuilding and build the housing project. This sort of gives you the site plan. As you can see, the live-work units are on the ground floor, and the rental units will be on top, and you have a surface parking lot at the back. This is kind of gives, it's a five-story, 59-foot-tall building, and this is the elevation on Adeline Street, and this kind of gives you the rendering, the daytime rendering of the building. So the request is, the use permit technically expired a couple of days ago, since the building permit has not yet been applied for. The applicant is working on obtaining financing for this project. Our regulations does allow the commission to grant the permit extension to a previously approved permit by one year, to a total of two years. So at this point, the request is for one year. And this is detailed further in the staff report. The applicant has kind of outlined the various efforts that he has made in procure obtaining financing of the building. They have also done a number of market studies and feasible studies, as noted on your slide above. And he has also listed the property for sale for, as an approved project to other developers. In addition, he's been talking, considering the possibility of converting this into 100% affordable project, and in conjunction with that, he's held several meetings with our economic development and housing manager, that's Chad. In order to approve this permit extension, the commission has to make the following findings. We believe that these findings can be made. This is after all, a housing project. We are in a housing crisis. There is no additional information regarding the site or the circumstances around this project that warrant any further CQ review, and the applicant has maintained the property in, essentially maintained the property in decent order. So this is the reason why our staff is recommending approval for permit extension, and if granted, the new expiration date would be next year, March 22nd, 2020. The applicant is present. If you have any questions from him, I'm not sure whether, Ali, would you like to address the commission as well?
Yeah.
Are there any questions for Maru so far?
Just one. Has staff seen the items listed under 1, A, B, C, and D?
In terms of documentation?
Yeah.
No, we were not provided that information.
My name is Ali Kashani. I'm the applicant for this project. I'm part owner of the building. We, as outlined in Miru's report, we secured construction budget, no bids at this stage, right around when we got our use permit last March. And we also commissioned, the Concord Group did a market study for rents, and as we proceeded to develop the plans, construction costs kept going up and rents stayed flat. Rents pretty much have stayed flat in the Bay Area market, in the East Bay. And we waited till August to see how things play out. That outpacing of construction costs continued, so we listed the property for sale. We received one offer. The buyer wasn't really qualified. We didn't go into escrow. And we had two or three meetings with the housing staff, exploring the city's interest in participating, if we built the whole project as 100% affordable. So the city is interested. The bond money has not been processed or sold yet, so the city is not ready to make a commitment if we were to proceed to build it. So we're prepared to put the land in and build it as an affordable project. So we're in conversations with Mr. Smalley. We, our former tenant left middle of January this year. We've secured the building. I drive by all the time and make sure nobody is squatting in it, and we are hoping, we have also listed the building for lease in the interim. Unfortunately, people don't want to sign a lease for just two years, in fact, for one year, because the extension we're getting is for one year. So the building is most likely going to stay vacant, because people don't want to put any effort for a short-term stay at the building. We appreciate you granting us the extension, and we are exploring every way possible to either build the project or sell it to someone that's qualified to build it, or build it as an affordable. And I'm happy to provide all the documentation I have mentioned to Miru if you would like to see them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Do you have a question?
So I took a look at that. I actually went by that building, just, actually, just the other day, and I took a look at it. And one question I had is, like, exactly, can you explain a little bit why you're having problems with the, is it money in the terms of just the cost of rent by itself and the cost of construction? Are those really the two main factors? Are there other issues that have come up that you've kind of also made it so you need to have this extension happen?
As far as building the project?
Yes, as far as building this project.
Yeah. I was actually explaining this to someone yesterday. Building in the East Bay, the costs are the same, whether you build here or you build on Bancraft and Telegraph. At Bancraft and Telegraph, you get rents about $5 per square foot. In this location, you get $3 per square foot. The cost of construction is the same. And the other reason other large projects, market rate projects are getting built, is that they're larger. This is a small project. There is a basic overhead that we have to pay the contractor to mobilize and build and put the cranes in. It's a small project. So the cost, the return on cost is not there for a project of this size. And that's something we couldn't have anticipated. Construction costs have gone up, because we have had all these fires in California, and all the resources are basically going away. Yeah.
Any questions? Question?
I have questions in terms of the 100% affordable housing options. Is that for rental units or for properties that people could purchase?
We're underwriting it as for, for rent project. In fact, given Prop 1B and 1C that passed, the estate is putting a lot of money out on the street for housing that addresses homelessness. So the latest model we ran and shared with Chad has 22 of the 29 units at 20% AMI and 30% AMI. So it's deeply affordable. The overall project is about 38% average affordability, 38% AMI. So the funding is there at the state level. When the city is ready, I'm sure the city is very interested in seeing that built as an affordable. We just have to see if the timing works for us to build it as an affordable. We're building a project in West Oakland, 79 units. We're doing another one in East Oakland, 23 units, both affordable.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just, one question. If you do it as an entirely affordable at that level, would you still do the live-work units at the ground floor?
Yes. Yeah. We would lose one of the live-work units, because we have to, we have a small community room right now, but we will take over one of the live-work. We might have to come back for a small modification before you. For that purpose, we would need to have a larger community room, counseling offices, that sort of thing. So we would lose one of those units.
Okay. I actually have a question for staff. Maru, can you talk to us a little bit about what the conversation or considerations that the city has had in these conversations with Ali about making it 100% affordable?
I was not involved in those conversations with Chad Smalley, and he has not reported to me one way or the other regarding the feasibility of how this can become 100% affordable. Obviously, if we can, we would, but he has not mentioned anything one way or the other.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Okay. If there are no more questions, I will open up the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak on this item. Is there anyone here in the public for this? No? All right. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Open it up for deliberation. Tito, would you like to start us off?
Sure. A couple of concerns that I'm thinking about is what happens after the one year. The building's going to be kind of there if nothing happens. I keep hearing about rent rates going skyrocketing and all this other stuff, so I'm wondering, it brings me some flags when someone says, oh, they're not high, but everybody's like, can't afford anything the way it is now. But we need affordable housing, and we need it bad, and this is like one, here's one example of somebody, and could it be looked into, and another, maybe some other avenues we could think about, play this out?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think I'm in support of the project since it's come before us in review, and yeah, I've heard, I've heard some of the same things about construction costs going very high, so this does not surprise me. I think it's still a good project. I'm glad you're investigating the 100% affordable, because I think, you know, really looking at all options is a good thing to do, so.
I have no problem with the extension.
I believe the applicant has demonstrated that there's a good faith effort to seek funding for the project, and I like the direction it's taking.
I have no problem with the extension.
I also don't have any issues with the extension. My only concern is regarding the security at the site, because I know we've had some issues with some of the, with the site across the street and the fires that we've had. Did you say that the building's currently boarded up or locked? Or how, yeah?
Locked, yeah.
Is there any chance of anybody, like, accessing the perimeter, not just inside the building, but like, is there a fence or anything like that where people can actually go into the building or into the property?
No. There's an existing, probably 14-foot-high fence on the MacArthur side, and the building itself is 20-foot-tall, and it's cinder block building, and it's tightly locked.
Not many windows or doors in the building for people to try and access, huh?
No. No, no. That's why I drive by all the time and make sure.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Well, with that, does anybody want to make a motion?
I motion to pass the extension.
I'll second it.
All right.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Hidalgo and seconded by Commissioner Young. On the extension request, Commissioner Donaldson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hidalgo.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller has an excused absence. Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Vice Chair Herrero.
Aye.
And Chair Barrera.
Aye.
Six ayes. The extension is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Moving on to the next item. It is amendment to the planning regulations to allow research and development in the MUR district. Far is going to give us his presentation.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, commission. As you said, I'll be making the presentation tonight on adding the research and development use type to the MUR zone. The applicant, Hong Ho, is also here tonight and would like to address the commission after my presentation. So for background, the proposal is to allow the research and development, or R&amp;D, use type in the MUR zone, which is the mixed-use with residential zone, with a conditional use permit. This would only require the change of, that you see on the screen here, of changing the X that is circled to a C for conditional use permit, so prohibited to conditionally permitted. So for background, the definition of R&amp;D, what are we talking about when we say that? The definition we have in our planning regulations is research of an industrial or scientific nature, including associated office space. Typical uses include indoor laboratories and testing facilities. So this use type may include a fabrication in small scale-up facilities as part of the research function, but excludes manufacturing use types. So that said, it's still pretty broad. There's a lot of different things that can fall under R&amp;D. So for the MUR definition, it's one or more of a variety of residential and non-residential uses, including but not limited, offices, retail, and hotels. On larger sites, a mix of residential and non-residential use is required. On smaller sites, a single use may be permitted. So this proposal, while it's centered around, or came up rather, because of the applicant's properties of MUR zone in the north part of the city, there's MUR throughout the city in various property sizes. So here's a map of the city, and highlighted on the corner there are the five zones where R&amp;D is currently permitted, sometimes outright and sometimes with a conditional use permit. So if you look at the purple areas, this kind of pink OT area, the stripy area, the dark and light gray sections, that's where R&amp;D is currently allowed to go in. This would expand it to all the more salmon green area, or salmon green, I just made that up. Don't eat that.
(laughing).
More salmon pink colors. So that is throughout the cities, you can see. So where the applicant is located here, that's spurring this conversation, is up here in the north, but we right now are in MUR, well, not physically right now, but across the street is MUR zone, most of the Park Avenue district, and in many areas along the city, some on San Pablo Avenue. So the reason for the proposal, the applicant has received many inquiries from R&amp;D establishments, but they're unable to lease to them, obviously. The existing spaces that cater to R&amp;D in Emeryville are generally for larger labs and are not what startups or smaller labs need necessarily. And the applicant suggests the proposal would help Emeryville attract and serve a greater variety of R&amp;D uses. As a person who staffs a planning counter, I can also say that I do get many inquiries about R&amp;D uses and, let me try that again, about the R&amp;D use in the MUR zone. So it is something that comes up quite frequently. So the R&amp;D covers a diversity of uses. We mentioned that. Requiring a CUP in the MUR provides opportunity to assess potential impacts, so there's findings that are required in performance standards to address air quality, light, glare, waste, noise, odor, things that people typically be concerned with, with R&amp;D use potentially. And those safeguards, staff feels the discretionary review process is appropriate to allow R&amp;D in the MUR zone. Required findings, proposed amendment is consistent with the general plan. There's a list here of goals and policies that are consistent with this request. The proposed amendment is necessary for public health and safety. The CUP is required to protect public health, and it's also a benefit to adding diversity of economic employment opportunities in the city. And the proposed amendment is consistent with environmental regulations. The general plan, EIR, was certified in 2009. This is consistent with this, and there's been no significant changes to the general plan or anything that would trigger a new or supplemental EIR in that time span. So for recommendations, staff recommends adopting the resolution, approving the proposed amendment to the planning regulations, and recommending it to city council to adopt the amendments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for Navar before we invite the applicant to come on?
I have a quick question. So in this, from a staff perspective, why was R&amp;D not included in this zone? Do you have a sense of that?
I can respond to that. When we, first of all, the general plan is silent on this. It doesn't really say where R&amp;D should go and where it shouldn't go. When we did the new planning regulations about six years ago in 2013, when they were adopted, the sense was that there could potentially be a conflict between R&amp;D and housing, not that they're incompatible uses, but that we wanted to be sure that there were sites available in the city where R&amp;D could go, where there wouldn't be pressure for housing to be there too, therefore usurping the sites that could have become R&amp;D use. So as Navar pointed out, the zoning districts in which R&amp;D is currently allowed.
Can you show the map again?
Yes. And housing is not allowed in any of those districts. The intent of that really was to protect the R&amp;D use, not because it was, felt that R&amp;D would be incompatible, as I said, with housing. But we kind of had an unintended consequence of this. What we ended up doing was zoning the city so that R&amp;D and housing were not allowed anywhere together. So nothing that allowed housing also allowed R&amp;D. Well, the MUR zone, as this map shows, covers a big part of the city, and it does allow housing. Therefore, in the new planning regulations, we didn't allow R&amp;D there. But in retrospect, that probably was not the right decision, as evidenced by what Navar has indicated, all the inquiries she gets all the time. We don't, in retrospect, we don't see anything inherently incompatible about allowing R&amp;D, especially since it would require a conditional use permit in the MUR district.
I'd like to just add to that briefly. When people come in and inquire about R&amp;D or any use, you know, the first thing is like, is this an R&amp;D use? Tell me more about what you're doing here. And particularly with a lot of the smaller uses or the startups that are scaling up, there's a really fine line between office and R&amp;D. A lot of them are doing modeling, and many times, the question is, is it office or R&amp;D? And it's very, very similar, and it can be a tough call. So we do have several uses that are determined to be office right now with accessory R&amp;D, but as they scale up, they won't be able to continue use in that same place as they grow, and they'll have to find a new location. And so logistically, it creates problems not to have both office and R&amp;D in the same zone in at least one large area.
And the MUR zone does allow office?
Office is a permitted use. Yeah.
Interesting. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Navar so far? Okay. Mr. Ho, why don't you come on up? Thank you, Navar.
Good evening. My name is Hong Ho, and I'm the applicant, and I represent Hackman Capital Partners, the landlord for Jelly Bean Square, which is the property that is kind of the case study tonight. And, you know, first of all, I wanted to thank you for your time and allowing me to speak, and I also wanted to thank Navar. She's been very helpful, helping me guide through this process, because it's all very new to me. And it's new to me because Hackman Capital Partners just entered the Emeryville market August of 2018. So we're very new. We are a redevelopment company, a development company that specializes in taking older buildings and finding a higher and better use for them. And when we came here, we saw a lot of opportunity with this particular lab market, and I think as we move forward, I expect to be here a lot more frequently as my redevelopments are finished with ushering in new prospects. So I just wanted to say hello and introduce myself. So I just wanted to say hello and introduce myself to the planning commission. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the business side. I think Navar's analysis does a very good job analyzing from a planning perspective. And I think when I look at this, when I looked at Emeryville initially, you know, it's really, there's a lot of first-class R and D facilities here, life science lab, you have your Behrs, Novartis, Zimergen. And then at the same time, you know, I look at Berkeley and the breakthrough research that they have, and USF, and, you know, these startups today could very well be your next big player in the marketplace. So, why not have an opportunity for these startups to start here in Emeryville? They're small companies that are looking for two thousand, five thousand square foot floor plates, very different from a lot of the market supply that you see today. They are bringing with them a lot of research dollars, they're bringing them good to higher-income type of jobs, that will definitely grow the revenue base for the city. And I think just as importantly, it attracts real estate investors and developers like myself and Hackman Capital Partners, where we bring in our capital to take the existing facility and make it better, and, you know, more productive for the community. So hopefully, when you evaluate this proposal to allow R and D in M U R, you take into the consideration all these factors of how we can continue to make Berkeley a great place to work and live.
All right, thank you. Okay, are there any questions?
I have one question for the applicant. Have you guys gone through any sort of analysis in terms of, for the building, theoretically say this went through, and you do put in R and D facilities in terms of insurance for the building? I know it's kind of a classic problem with mixed-use developments is insurance companies can get skittish on providing that.
Okay. I haven't really seen that issue. Currently, we use FM Global, which is a very big national company. They know the market that they're in, or that we're in. We haven't really experienced any type of difficulty. I think the other factor that Navar kind of talked about is R and D is very broad, right? The type of users that we're talking about are more smaller startup companies, we're talking a couple benches, a couple hoods. They're not something that's elaborate infrastructure that, you know, can present some type of significant risk. I think those companies tend to be the larger type of, you know, floor plates type of companies. I think the targets that I've seen, in particular, going through the Jelly Bean building, are these smaller startups, and that's where it fits well with them, but nothing to, that I've seen that at least raises in my mind, risk, that an insurance person would say, hey, this is, you know, this is too costly, or something that couldn't get.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I had one quick question, was really just, I mean, you know, can you describe more what you're seeing in terms of the operations of these places? Because I know you just mentioned a couple benches, a couple hoods, and in the description, in terms of what the prospects were, we understood what they were by title, but not really how they operate. So, do you get a sense of like, like, what their waste is like, whether they have ventilation needs, you know, what sort of, what's, what are the issues in terms of operation?
Yeah, absolutely. So there's a prospect list in the application here, that kind of talks about the uses that I have seen. I would just go vaguely through them because I'm under confide, so I can't be too specific. One of them is a genetics type of company, not my area of specialties by any means. They're at a B S one, which is kind of a lower-grade type of lab. They have biomaterials, they're not viruses or anything like that, they're more like genetic material, cells. They have certain restrictions as it relates to how you treat, you know, contaminating materials, but nothing to the extent where, you know, you're required to have ESFR, flammable, you know, sprinkler response systems. These hoods and vents, they tend to be contained in a box, they tend to be mobile, so they can move in, tap in, and then when they want to move on or vacate, they just move out. So there's nothing here in terms of materials that I think is, that, I guess from an insurance standpoint as well, that really worries me. I have walked this particular prospect's lab at Berkeley, and it's no different than you would look at, you know, any typical, you know, brochure, with some magnifying glasses here, and some, you know, autoclave, which is kind of like a sterilizer, but there's nothing, I've never had to gown up, or, you know, anything like that when I go through their spaces. Another prospect that I have right now is, it's kind of a quasi-R and D, kind of agricultural, kind of industrial mix. They grow mushrooms, and they're taking that and replacing leather with this type of material. And I just had lunch with them today, and they asked me what's going on, you know, can we, what can we do? And I told them, I'm seeing what I can do for you. You know, you're, you're talking about growing, you know, organic materials here, you know, just making sure that their mushrooms have proper oxygen, carbon dioxide mixture to grow, and they use some sawdust, and some magic happens, and now you have really nice leather. I never had to gown up, I never had to do anything particular for their operations. And then, the third prospect that I've seen that's asking me is a medical device company. Again, it's another like, well, what is R and D? Well, they're a medical device company, they don't manufacture, they want to do that off-site, but this is their corporate headquarters, or they have visions of making this their corporate headquarters. But with that, they have a team of engineers, that people who play with their gadgets, and they have to, you know, look at the molding and design certain things, and so, you know, when you're in that kind of test, you know, phase, you know, if you're, if you're trying to put materials together, you want to make sure there's ventilation in case, you know, it spreads somewhere, you can, you know, vent it out to the street where it's, it's safe for everybody. I've been to their location as well, and I come like this, you know, nothing special, just to make sure that there's air circulation. So I think, you know, to Navar's point, when you have conditional use, you have the ability to kind of regulate and say, is this good, is this bad? How extreme is it, and how does that impact the community? And I think that's a safeguard that you'll have, you know, if you go through this, this process. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, if there are no more questions, I'll open it up, open up the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak on this item. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up for deliberation. Would you like to get us started?
I think this is really a, kind of a neat thing to do with this space. I know that building real well, and it's, call it the, kind of the Pomo Building in Emeryville. But, I'm just looking at, just looking at the level of these kinds of labs, I've designed them myself, they're really low-level, a couple hoods or a hood, and, I think if there's a little bit of concern about if we want to be a little bit stickler about it, we could say, what kind of filter systems that we might want to, we might want to regulate that, like what, what would be admitted in case it is. It's a good thing it's right, almost right across the street from the fire station, so it's, you know, it's kind of a, but I, I think it's a, I think it's, I think it utilizes the space, it brings in some intelligent people back into, more in, in Emeryville, I think is a, I think is a positive place.
I would just like to clarify one thing to Commissioner Young's point. What is before you this evening is a zoning amendment to, to simply allow this use with a conditional use permit, either here or in any of the M U R zones. If that is approved by you, and ultimately by the City Council, then anything in his building, or any other building in the M U R zone, will have to come back for a conditional use permit on which conditions can be imposed, similar to the ones you're describing. I would note that R and D is not considered a use of special concern, which is a special category in our planning regulations, and therefore, a conditional use permit for a use that's going into an existing building normally is handled at a staff level, so most likely you will not be seeing these back at the commission level. We will handle the conditional use permits for the individual uses at staff level. And we can certainly impose conditions like you are suggesting if, if it appears to be appropriate.
So then, Charlie, if one of the, if it's leased to an R and D company that is doing one particular kind of R and D, and they, the tenant leaves and a different R and D use comes in, you have to go through the whole process again?
It depends on how the conditional use permit is written. If, and I would imagine we would make it specific to the particular establishment. So, another use came in that also needed a use permit, if it didn't, if it had some reason why it couldn't comply with the conditions that had been imposed on the previous use, then they would have to apply again, or get the commission, conditions modified. I think Navar wants to say something.
Sorry about that. So I just wanted to kind of address some of the concerns that are coming up around, for example, ventilation and things like that. And as a reminder, we're only looking at the zoning tonight. These uses also require building permits, and so when building reviews these things, they're looking at the ventilation process, and their safety, fire looks at them. How the application process works most of the time is that someone comes to me and says, can I do this here? And then I tell them what their path is. And part of that path is, before they even submit to planning, is I route them to planning and building for a pre-submital meeting. Because if I say yes to something, or the zoning says yes to something, but there's something about the building that makes the project not feasible, you don't want to go through that, like, why go down that path, right? So, building and fire are evolved, involved, pardon me, particularly in R and D uses very early in the process, and then again, that's a back-and-forth process. So for example, one of the most frequent things that comes up with R and D is the ventilation, so there's rooftop equipment. Well, that triggers our noise regulations, and there's maximum decibels on that. So then I'm looking at the rooftop equipment, so they're real back-and-forth here to address these considerations of potential impacts, and the applicant being aware very early in process of what their responsibilities are, and to make it the best possible facility to fit in with that context.
So Navar, do you go through that process before they actually apply for the use permit? It's like a pre-application kind of?
I wouldn't go into the detail of, like, let me look at the specific rooftop equipment that you're going to put in, but if it's identified that they're going to need that, and they know that, I tell them before they even submit for the planning application. And this is what you're going to need to do. The idea is we're trying to take away as many question marks as early as possible in the review process. Is that?
Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you.
That's pretty helpful, yeah.
So, I do have a clarification question. So, as I'm understanding this, if the zoning changes to conditional, the majority of these would be staff-approved because these are existing buildings? Was I just hearing that recently?
Yes, yes, that's right. And actually, I should just say, as, as Navar was talking about the process, it sounds like she has a lot of experience with this already, all right? That's because all those zones that are up there that are circled in red, R and D is already permitted with a conditional use permit in existing buildings, and so we do get applications, and she is the one who processes them. This will simply expand the area where that would be possible.
Okay, all right.
I do actually have one other question, because I'm looking at the mixed-use with non-residential, there, you know, there's one zone that's pretty close to housing, and I know you did, you know, Charlie, you did mention that, you know, you don't consider it incompatible with housing because there's a wide range of what happens under this classification. Have there been any historical issues with housing?
With R and D?
Yeah, with an R and D, like maybe in the M U N zone.
Not that I'm aware of. I think we did have one noise complaint about a rooftop, piece of rooftop equipment that was across the street from a condo development. They were in different zoning districts, you know, one was in the OT and the other was in whatever, M U R, I guess, but they were right across the street from each other. Turned out that the, much to the residents dismay, the, it actually was not violating our noise standards. They were just particularly sensitive, I guess. But that's the only thing that I can recall.
Yeah, and to speak to that, and that, that particular instance actually is why we look at things like, what is your rooftop equipment going to be so early in the process now? We give this heads up and require reports really often. So this is, goes back to Emeryville just being such a mixed-use city in the first place, and it is a learning process, right? I think staff has, as the regulations have been around now for a few years, become pretty adept at trying to identify these particular things that we know could be potential problems in the future, and working with applicants as soon as possible to address them so they don't become issues like that particular instance did later on.
Any other comments?
No.
No, no. My concern was about how, what kind of controls are when uses change, once the use has initially been approved, and I'm feeling pretty comfortable with what you're talking about.
I don't have any reservations with changing the zoning amendment for this piece here. I think that you've demonstrated that this is something you have a lot of experience with, and I have full confidence in what you're doing. Thank you. Oh, and welcome to the city, Mr. Ho. Yep, you're welcome.
I'm all for allowing the city more flexibility in their zoning code.
All right, thanks. I guess all I want to say is that, Navar, I appreciate your perspective, because I think it helped us to understand and gave us confidence in, you know, the process that you all are doing at the city. And I just want to say, thanks for spearheading this change for, for Emeryville. Hopefully you get a tenant soon now that, you know, if this passes tonight. So, with that said, would anybody like to make a motion?
I make a motion to pass.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hidalgo, and seconded by Vice Chair Herrera. You ready for roll call? Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hidalgo?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller has an excused absence. Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herrera?
Aye.
And Chair Barrera.
Aye.
Six ayes, we will forward your recommendation to the City Council.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is planning commissioner comments. Does anybody have any comments?
Just one quick one. I want to say, Charlie, you are amazing. I had a coworker email you about stormwater today, and you responded within an hour or two. I have not seen such response from city staff anywhere before.
We do our best. Thank you.
Any other comments? No. All right, with that, the meeting is adjourned.